We're moving on to solid.
Yeah. Hey, Andy, you want to move up front here with us?
He's in back here.
I know.
You can't decide who to vote for. You want to sit here?
So, last time I was here, we talked about Section 4, which is the plan submission. What you have in front of you is the next two sections, or Section 5 and Section 6, which are some standards being approved in the construction apartments. In terms of mechanics, what happened, how this came to be, we started with the model that our office has used over the over the years in a variety of municipalities. Scott looked through them and put a lot of good comments and questions in here. We met last week, I think, to go over. Most of us, we were on the same page in terms of what comments you see. The text they sent to give you back here, these sections, is a little small, which is, you know. What I wanted to make sure is that you saw the comments that Scott added in here to some of these sections, because that's as valuable to the conversation as was actually there. I left track changes on there so you can see the stuff that Scott's crossed out and were added in as well. We can start going through it. I don't think we're going to get two whole sections tonight.
No.
I don't know how far you want to go. Or if there's something specific, you'd like me to start, let me start. I don't know what you haven't seen beforehand as well before I gave you this.
So, the yellow highlight means?
The yellow highlight with something slashed through it. I may have highlighted it in yellow. When I write something, I typically highlight things in yellow or something like that as a shorthand for myself to... or as something to, you know, question mark. In this case, it was raised there and Scott sort of crossed it. The line through it, when Scott said it, which is perfectly flat, perfectly flat.
I don't have the zoning ordinance memorized, but I don't think there's a steep slope ordinance. So, this first page on E, it says that the slopes will comply with the steep slope zoning ordinance. So, I crossed that out because it's not...
And as Scott and I discussed last week, there's a lot of this, you know, we've done this with multiple municipalities and multiple different engineers over the years. And each one has their own little preferences. Each municipality has its own little things and designs that it prefers, given its setting. So, some of these need to be, you know... Two of the questions that we put into you guys here is to decide what things are appropriate for your township. The next section and the part that we'll probably spend the most time on here tonight, or we'll get to most, is Section 503, which covers streets. And it goes on for a number of pages here.
He said 503?
503, yeah. This covers a whole different section of standards for streets. Under general standards, Scott added two sections, which I agree with. Of course, references to traffic studies required. And that section is added later. That's occasionally, you know, if someone's looking for access to a state road, PENDOT's going to control that. There are occasional developments that come off of non-state roads where PENDOT won't get involved. But it's significant enough that you probably might want to look at something. They have some standards in there that if you want to trigger it, you could trigger that and tell them what to do.
If you have a large residential development or a commercial coming over the township street, you need something to analyze it.
Yeah, so it's all a township street. I'll use the one we just talked about. It's called Township Street. PENDOT's not going to get involved. If it's not accessing the road, PENDOT's not going to get involved. If that was bigger property and a significantly larger commercial development, you might want to see some numbers about what's that impact on the road. That will give you the standards to do that. The number eight there is about it being signed in accordance with the MUTTC, that's the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices. That's the traffic control bible that all state agencies are using.
All these terms and acronyms will be defined in the definition.
I know where those are. That's a big thick book.
That's the thing, covers what the signs look like, what color they're supposed to be, what the size of the lettering is.
PENDOT actually adopts that and they tweet very little to make it their own. It's pretty much the same thing.
It's nationwide.
The next part that we added here is road classification. And put this in here to kind of define what some of these are so that there's some guidelines to go by. I've seen some municipalities that do a map of their road. You can do that too. This is kind of, you might see what they are.
If you don't do that classification, then you can't enforce the rest of this, right? You have to have the classification.
Part I read that Scott put the street construction specifications associated with it. I forgot to print this out and bring those along. But Scott has some examples of those, these sections here, drawings that we had put in the plan that somebody blue comes in to build something. Okay, they go to pull that and incorporate that right into their plan design. That way, you're telling exactly what you want. If they want to do something different, they can always ask you to relate. But they'll have a story in the plan. The discussion point for this is, as it usually is, what widths do you want for which streets? That's only the biggest talking point. It gets to that mix in, I'll say, modern subdivisions, of the mix between width for access and parking versus plowing and maintenance versus stormwater and runoff. What's the right mix there? There's a couple of developments, I say down around the shares down, for example, like the early 90s era where they have the 40-foot wide cartways.
Conawal County Township.
Yeah, like Nick Indian Ridge. And the one right across from Fruitland was a great example of it. And in there, they'll plot a 10-foot path down the middle of the road and there's still 10 feet for property owners to dig out of just to get out of the driveway. You know, so there's, but again, there's plenty of space for off-street parking, mind you. So, it's, you know, but that's, you know, there's also stormwater and things like that. So, that's part of the background of where that decision point comes in.
Something that's not, I mean, these ordinancees dictate that. It has the huge right-of-way, like getting paved. Ultimately, though, the township is the one that has to repair it and maintain it. And based on densities and things, you know, where you have large single-family lots and driveways, you don't need all that on-street parking. What you need is high density. I know of one instance where the township allowed high-density townhouses in with like a two-way 24-foot cartway. There's no on-street parking. It's an issue. It becomes a real issue. But the township, that's what the ordinance allows.
I know that if you ask a planner to know what streets, it's not possible. But then again, that's, there's what the maintenance folks might want to be doing the plowing, what might be preferable there and that sort of thing. I know there's preferences and I know where in Twin Springs, we're supposed to get the vehicles off the street during the snow, which is easier said than done. My 15-passenger van in the driveway, it goes like this. As I did this, so. Apparently, a 15-passenger van and a hip replacement don't go together. So, I got the van, my mom got the Highlander because that was Dr. approved. The problem was, it snowed. So, but, you know, it is an example there. We're supposed to get stuff off the street because it makes it easier, which is understandable. You know, there's still stuff to clear out, but it's not, I think they're, what, 34 feet? Something like that, you know, so. So, I mean, it's, you know, that's the discussion point. I don't know if you need to make a decision tonight. You might want to talk with, you know, see what the maintenance folks think, might think. I don't know what your process or discussion points might be there, but...
And that's why I also have two different types of roads. I've got the regular design and I've got an alternate design. So, the regular design would be for a higher-density development that would allow on-street parking. And then the alternate would be for like larger lots for like 1 acre and greater, or 2 thirds of an acre or greater. Homes would not have on-street parking because they would have more room on their driveway to park.
Collectors don't want to encourage on-street parking.
Yeah, and with the collector, it's a little bit wider and it's going to be for your pavement section than the minor streets.
And there's things that can, a collector may have kind of more utilities and things like that, underground utilities and things, you know, regulated.
I know from what we've seen in other parts of the county where there's a lot more commercial industrial development, some towns, they're wanting those utilities put in that right-of-way there so it's all in one place and you don't have to worry about it being... There's a right-of-way, there's another easement somewhere else that's going to, it's all in one place and you don't have to worry about that.
Those extremes, easements floating around, that'd be a problem.
There's a, and one of the comments here that we have to define is, what constitutes high-density development in commercial industrial areas? I don't know if that's an issue in township, but I don't know how we necessarily define that for a commercial industrial area. Or if it's not, given the setting, the setting, how much of it might get, is it even worse?
Who defines high-density?
And that's for the...
Only a square foot warehouse.
Well, I mean, maybe it's the number of trips per day or something that would trigger that.
That probably would be, yeah. If it's something that generates excess traffic going in and out, a warehouse might not generate that much.
They don't. Interesting, if you go to Southern Township where Kohl's Drug Store is, you look at the number of trips that place generates compared to the warehouses that were originally proposed there. The township's bitching about that now, but...
Yeah, I mean, we can research and see what that threshold of difference to them. Now, that provision there is under, you know, when you might require additional width from what's in there based on certain conditions. Going on, the next one is street grades. I'm going to say this is engineering, Scott made these changes. I don't have any, I'm going to trust him as the one who's engineering things because I don't, as planners, I'm not necessarily know the difference.
As a retired engineer, I will call my own. Notice I said retired. I leave out half percent street grades enough to know that you can't pave half percent and get proper drainage off of it.
It's pretty flat.
It's flat and it's hard for a paver to even put down that without giving pockets or... So, that slight, even that slight amount of another quarter percent slope aids in the ability to get that paving in there and get the water off of it and flow.
But, well, I just wanted you to note there, it says PENDOT's minimum is half percent. So, I'm just giving you the information.
I like the three-quarters. I mean, it's, some places you can go to 1%. Now, if you've got a real flat area, you're going to have trouble. You have like some of these places where there's real flats and not much slope on the ground and you try and put a street in there and maintain it, three-quarters, you may have to play with the vertical curves and stuff to get the thing to work, but that's a problem for a designer.
There's not too many flat areas in the township.
Not in this one.
Look in our parking lot out here. When it rains, you've got a lake in the middle of the parking lot.
I know down there around Hanover, there's places that are so flat that you couldn't, half percent, it just couldn't work.
You have other areas in the county where you get what you get because you can't lose the stuff often. You bet rock loses so hard. You're like down in Hampton with the ironstone. Down there, you get what you get in some of those developments around there. Or you crack the basins of the people across the street when you blast. As has happened. On page, page five there, that's what I added, things about the vertical and curved and things like that. I'm glad I put that in there because it's this type of tweaks that, I can give you the framework, this type of tweaks that we need to...
A lot of townships have these long equations and they tell you it's got to meet this, that, and the other thing. I just, that just bothers me. I wanted to simplify it a little bit and say...
Just put the K values in.
Right. This is what you got to design to without having all this complicated stuff.
And was there, on the horizontal curves, anything like that?
Yeah, the horizontal curves, I mean, that's pretty standard.
Page six, information about the side triangles. Scott made some edits there, which we agree with. Discussion point, next part is a discussion point that a lot of municipalities have and there's, you know...
Lots of different viewpoints on it.
Yeah, a lot of different viewpoints. Some like cul-de-sacs, some hate cul-de-sacs, some don't care. What we typically see, the discussion points around cul-de-sacs, the biggest concern we usually get here about cul-de-sacs actually comes from the road crews.
Where disposal of snow.
And where do you push the snow in a cul-de-sac there? I know of one, yes, that I work with where they're in...
Half percent, it just couldn't work.
You have other areas in the county where you get what you get because you can't lose the stuff often. You bet rock loses so hard. You're like down in Hampton with the ironstone. Down there, you get what you get in some of those developments around there. Or you crack the basins of the people across the street when you blast. As has happened. On page, page five there, that's what I added, things about the vertical and curved and things like that. I'm glad I put that in there because it's this type of tweaks that, I can give you the framework, this type of tweaks that we need to...
A lot of townships have these long equations and they tell you it's got to meet this, that, and the other thing. I just, that just bothers me. I wanted to simplify it a little bit and say...
Just put the K values in.
This is what you got to design to without having all this complicated stuff.
And was there, on the horizontal curves, anything like that?
Yeah, the horizontal curves, I mean, that's pretty standard.
Page six, information about the side triangles. Scott made some edits there, which we agree with. Discussion point, next part is a discussion point that a lot of municipalities have and there's, you know...
Lots of different viewpoints on it.
Yeah, a lot of different viewpoints. Some like cul-de-sacs, some hate cul-de-sacs, some don't care. What we typically see, the discussion points around cul-de-sacs, the biggest concern we usually get here about cul-de-sacs actually comes from the road crews.
Where disposal of snow.
And where do you push the snow in a cul-de-sac there? I know of one, yes, that I work with where their engineer is requiring snow easements at the somewhere.
Somewhere to push it off of the cul-de-sac.
I think he prefers at...
Straight in.
In the very back. Now, that just develops something like that.
That's probably where the most desirable houses should be.
Well, and that's, and that's, engineering lies the, lies the conflict that developers are having with him. But that came directly from that township's road crew. Like, you know, we don't care, but if, we don't like them, but if you're going to have them, we need someplace to put it, is what it really boils down to. So, I don't know if, like you said, there's only one real development that doesn't have cul-de-sacs. So, I don't know if it had ever been thought about, if there's a preference or what it might be. I'll be perfectly upfront with you. Planners do not like cul-de-sacs. Planners prefer grid networks, but planners aren't always right either. So, there's some standards in here.
Designers like them, get rid of them, want to use piece of ground.
I had that conversation with somebody today. There's some standards in there that...
They have them numbered.
For them. If you want to keep them in there, I would suggest adding, we add some sections there that they have to identify with snow easement area. I don't know what a good size of that would be.
10 by 20, 10 by 20 size.
Any thoughts?
Well, it's there, it's cul-de-sac number three.
Snow shortage.
25, 20 will be out there.
Good, there should drain to the stormwater management system. And you can pile up snow up somewhere and then drain what somebody's lost.
They could do in the grocery store to set it up on the high corners. It's a sheet of ice down below.
Did we discuss the length?
That's number two there. It talks about the length.
That's for temporary cul-de-sacs. Number two is for permanent cul-de-sacs.
Two is permanent.
We had 500 feet.
Which is just what was in the template ordinance. Some townships like them, some townships hate them. I've seen cul-de-sacs over 1,000 foot long.
If they're going to be real long like that, they ought to have plans for extension tied into another street.
Well, that's going to go into number two then.
And I was talking about, if you're putting cul-de-sac in a commercial industrial area, then you want it to be designed based on the truck turning move templates that are getting more popular so you can... Because if you have, you know, a regular contractor truck versus a 53-foot semi, there are going to be different sized, different sized turning movements for the till.
Well, you see larger box trucks doing deliveries locally now.
They don't turn so...
With a semi, you might go back into the sort of...
The other first thing, I would be is really a fire truck. Really not a fire truck to be named. Because they have a, they have a... And it depends if you got one with a flex or you got the smaller straight with the rear turn.
And I looked at school buses too, so, I mean, we're okay for school buses to get around that.
That's just not to have.
Can't everything where we have one here? I mean, theoretically, that's sound. The property next to one's frame, theoretically. But, you know, at some point, and we see this, you have one developed property that only has access to the residential development. They put access in, it doesn't come out of there. It's technically one big long cul-de-sac. There's only one access, one access to them, you know. So, how does that, the standard apply to it even if it might come running, go around? You know, plus, PENDOT, the state roads now, PENDOT is cracking down and giving multiple accesses to the developer. Township might have requirement, you have to have two access points. When it comes out of the city, they might say, no, no, you're getting one. And they go, but the township wants two. You know, so how do these developers, you know? Who do we ask? who, who do we, who do we ask for relief from? And usually they come to the township because it's easy to get relief from the township, then just get it from PennDOT. That's why some of these cul-de-sac standards become important in that sort of situation. The next section is, is about intersections. And Scott made some edits, edits there where there were some conflicts and I think, if we're all agreeing with what that, that looks like.
So, three and seven, you've just, those are both crossed out?
Yeah, yeah, and three and seven come out and then three, I think three.
Three and seven were...
And replace it with three.
And number eight is good to have it, have it in there if only, if only because it's, it has a requirement that forces developers to at least address the issue. You might get the situation where, where it might not make sense, but then, then you're, they're saying why they can't, you have to agree with them rather than you asking them to provide them and saying, no, we don't have to. And the requirement that they, they have to show that they have that kind of... The next one starts, so the bank loan speed starts in bottom seven and goes to eight.
If anyone has any questions or input, speak out because we're just gonna keep rolling.
Sad to say, I understand this stuff.
Like I said, I, I have no, you know, some of the types, so I guess I'm gonna defer to Scott and Ted on what, what it might, technical reasons might be there. Remember, under K, street names, the part that's highlighted and, and read there about names of streets, I am, we have somebody in our office that splits time between our office and our services, GAS work. So, I plan to sit down with him next time he's in, in our, our building to figure out what that would look like, what that process would be. I do, I do know that it's a growing concern that, that they're having because as you get more developments, you get a lot of the same, the same road names. They try not to duplication. And you might not have duplication within a municipality, but you have within a county like, like which Irish Town Road are you talking about?
Or Gun Club Road. You got, I have to keep telling people on New York Springs, Gun Club.
No, each one.
Yeah, New Oxford. And there's, there's a thing of confusion of names and like, if you're familiar with Carlisle, you go in there, you got East North Street, Northeast Street. Something that's, it can be really confusing to most of the services.
They are, I, I, goodness, I say they're, they're aware of the problem. What, and I, what I'd like to have is, okay, what's your solution that you want, want here? And then we can start telling these people, this is what they would prefer. If this is something you want to address, here's what we suggest. How we suggest, they, you do it. Now, they could tie it into the addressing and, and, you know, I'll let them figure out what that is and then share that with you guys to see what you, see what you guys want to think. That's not, that's not standing item that I'm still, still working on. The next part about, about reserve strips.
They used to have a nickname, spike strips.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it can be handled however, however you want. I mean, the idea is generally not a great, they're not a great idea because it perhaps, it depends on the setting, I guess.
Because where they, where I ran into them is like, you'd have a developer doing a piece of ground and he'd, he'd save maybe five feet of ground off, adjoining the next property so that developer couldn't access, you know, in the future. He'd have control where we're punching the street. That's why they call them spike strips. We do have alleys in the township up in Ohio.
Yeah, we got them there. East Alley, West Alley.
And the part there, it's unmaintained by H Homers Association or other responsible entity. Keep that in mind as we get further, further into the, into the, what we provided you here. Next, next part is curves and sidewalks. This was the, this Scott, these were the sections that, that you talked about pulling.
Yeah, this was from the, the construction requirements, but this was more design related, so I moved it over to the design section.
And part of that is your current ordinance had it over there and, or has been split there. In most municipalities, they have these two sections or one. You happen to have this two, which is, which is perfectly fine. It's just that, it needs to be over here. And there's the sidewalk through the trigger in there when sidewalks shall, shall be provided in there. So, for example, something, you know, required some acre lots that will not be given above an acre lot. You have that acre lot and separate requirements, civil requirements. And then everywhere in commercial industrial.
And another preference point is, what kind of sidewalks do you want? Do you want four foot? Do you want five foot? Do you want four foot with the ability to have passing zones for five feet?
ADA requirements. I think they require five foot.
They need to require us five. That's where the passing lanes come in.
They require a minimum four foot with a five-foot wide passing zone every two feet.
Very simple.
Which sometimes that is, if it's not too steep, that can be done in driveway, you know, apron, concrete apron, but sometimes not. Sometimes, some townships want to just make it five foot all the time.
Some of the, some of the driveway part only works if it's a straight curve instead of a depressed. And there's pretty much both sides. The depressed curve makes easier to bend, but it's like the straight curve. So, they will make it so you can have the wire. There is just two foot. I, I, I have worked in municipality, we've done this where they may just made it straight five everywhere because a prop is, there's less property, responsibility, not ours. And we're gonna make sure that, that it's, everything is ADA compliant, just to make sure. And boroughs, I think, usually have this issue, this far, far more than townships do. Or, you know, municipality, township's way to tell this next to, you know, boroughs with high foot traffic. Off-street parking there, there. So, that's, that's the last of the, the street section. Next up is 504 off-street parking. Your current Saldo that has, and you go, this all the way back from page 27. Your current Saldo has a bunch of big section on off, on off-street parking that quite frank, quite frankly, all along was in zoning orders. I, I was, speculation on, on my, on my part, since it's based on history is, I'm wondering, and maybe somebody's been around longer than I have can, can answer this. Speculation that there, that might be a remnant of times before the township had zoning and that when there were, there were some of those dimensional standards in the Saldo and it may have never gotten pulled out when township adopted zoning. I just, that's just speculation on my part.
It could have, it could have been. Yeah, that goes back to 99, 98, back to, after that stuff. That'd be 98, 99, we adopted it. It could, that could be a run-up for that.
So, I think what we're, we're talking about is just taking that whole section out and saying, off-parking loading shall be provided in accordance with the zoning orders, say cross, or across, something's there. Everything, everything's over there.
Yeah, it streamlines it. It streamlines it. It gets, you don't need duplication in, from one ordinance to the other. Then the question comes up, which one?
Which one?
Yep. Gus is gonna say the zoning, I know.
Next, 505, talks about access drives. Scott filled that out a little bit, which we're good with. We have some standards in there, in, further than that for residential projects. Residential excluding multifamily and condos and then commercial industrial and multifamily condos. So, there's access drive standards for both types of, both types of uses there. Which gives you a little, little more type design things in there, there to point to and, and when something comes in that... Here's what we want, but if they want something, something else, they can ask for a waiver and they have to prove to you why that's, that's a better design than what you might acquire. The other, the other thing here, here, and I forgot to print this out, I'm getting it wrong. On page 10, you see a bunch of comments from Scott about zoning ordinance section 27. 27 dash 10, 10. There are access drive standards in your zoning ordinance. Those probably shouldn't be in the zoning ordinance. They should probably be in the Saldo. And the issue becomes in that what's, there might be different standards. I just seen some of Scott's notes there. There's different standards in zoning versus what might, you might want in Saldo. So, question that becomes, do you want to go through to the zoning? Do you want to go through the Saldo ordinance via in X?
And access drives are more of a design-related item instead of, you know, coming in zoning.
You don't want, you don't want to tag well with the zoning issue, having a variance or, you know, to get which can work out of designing, Saldo. I'd say, I mean, Saldo.
In that, in that case, if that's the case, then once we get this to a point where the Saldo is ready to go, there'll be companion, or there, or there should be a companion amendment that would essentially remove that section, section from the, from the zoning ordinance. Which, which leads to, we got a little off topic here for, for a second. Something that Scott and I talked about in our meeting. I'm, I'm not sure the township, I don't think the township has a, like, word, a word copy of its own ordinance. An editable, an editable copy of it. I don't have a staff at the moment to do that, to do this. Doesn't, might not in the future results. Always in terms of looking for, looking for experiences that we can borrow. We could at some point create that from your existing zoning ordinance to give you something to, to work from. There's been a number of amendments over the years that might not have been, just tackled in the back of the file.
Right.
That, that could be, also be incorporated as, as one text. If that is something the township is interested in, that could add something that we could add on to our workload at some point down the zone. I'm not saying, I'm saying I'm not doing it now. If that's something you're interested in, I'd have to, we'd have to work on some, some staffing issues to get that done, but that's something that we have the ability to do if you're interested.
Well, this was codified, the zoning ones. That, we had that sent out somewhere to get, did they, they keep any? They had to have some kind of...
I don't know what they do with the stuff they get, but that's...
Remember who did it? Remember who thought that?
Yeah, it's US Code.
Possibility. They may have a, still have, maybe.
Well, they'll give it to you without having to pay.
You gotta pay for it, because that's not free.
There, we, we have, I, between, so to say, we know Rob, Rob there in my office. He and I, we've, we have done this on multiple occasions where we have retyped entire ordinances specifically because usually a result of copification left in municipality without an editable copyright on the ordinance. So, in one case, the copification company wouldn't even allow them to sell a copy of the ordinance, their own ordinance. Because they claimed they held the copyright to it.
Well, in somebody else's Saldo.
Yeah, yeah. And making it, making it even, even worse, guess who wrote the, wrote the zoning ordinance? So, so who, whose copyright was it?
Oh, my God.
In, in any event, but so, this is an example of why we brought that, that up. Is that if we're gonna, you want to make these changes here, that section needs to come out of the zoning ordinance. Then if that's something you're interested in, down, later down the road, we can work, work on that for you so you have something to move forward with. Scott, was there, was there any comments in the, in the design that touched the access that you wanted to touch?
No, no, I don't think so. There's just, yeah, just, there was a lot of, and the variation between, is there any ordinance in office here? So, I just wanted to print all this out. Under B, under seven, I thought that was pretty strict. Access drive slope not to exceed 3% for a commercial, industrial, or multifamily. I mean, that's just, another point of discussion. I just thought that was pretty strict.
That 3% is what it is now? Yeah, correct.
Correct.
Is this commercial?
Commercial, industrial, multifamily.
Maybe see for more. And you could increase that some, but then again, you don't want the large trucks or something like that. You don't want a lot of smoking.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't recommend anything above 5%.
Yeah.
3%.
3's a little flat.
I mean, but just again, you don't have, you don't have really steep slopes here either.
No.
Not mountains that you have to worry about.
So, maybe. Oh, we have one of them. We put a stop sign at the bottom of it.
And number 10 got moved over as a comment that I meant to have it under there as regular text. And number ten got moved over as a comment that I meant to have it under there as regular tax.
Page twelve, guessing the blocks, the standards there for block for block length. These are pretty, let's listen here, they're pretty standard in rural areas. If you're in a bigger urban setting, you're probably talking one of the five, six hundred, you know, foot length for block, for block. Maybe, maybe eight hundred if, if they're, you know, the rest of the but for, for rural setting, these are, are fairly, fairly typical.
So are we now in section five oh seven?
We're at five oh, five oh six.
Right, right, the variation.
Just towards five oh six, where we're coming up to five oh seven.
Okay. Make a suggestion to Scott.
Well, I was gonna.
I was just gonna say anymore.
I was gonna say finish up the category at least. We're in the we're being another, we're coming up on five oh, five oh seven blocks.
It goes, it goes to five, it goes to five fifteen.
Yeah, we have about twenty minutes left. Finish it off with a, a breakpoint where we can log it.
Let's, let's finish it off with lots because then we get into easements and other things.
Okay.
And there, that gets us hit by about halfway. Lot, you know, lot, and this, this gets into.
Now, the issue of flag lots is, I wanted to bring up for discussion.
Yeah, under, under B, lot, lot frontage. In terms, in terms of flag, flag lots. This is another thing like cul-de-sacs. Some municipalities hate them. Some municipalities don't mind them. You know, it's, you know, comes down to what does that individual municipality think or prefer. I freely admit, I'm not, not sure what the township's position when they're, here on them is.
Wait, is there any golden nets there allowed and the, the flag must be maintained by thirty feet wide?
Yeah.
Which I thought was a degree. So he would have had, would have should have used fifty feet.
Well, that was done before zoning. I thought it was a stupid driveway and he was stupid on the property. He still stuck with it.
I'm gonna say you didn't sell that yet. Cause I thought, well, I saw people looking.
Oh, okay.
A couple looking at it. Well, I said, you walk up there? Yeah, we walk. Do you still want to buy it? Yeah.
And I said, well, that guy's crazy enough to sell it, did he?
Well, you engineers, you, you feel that fifty is an adequate number instead of thirty? I mean, if, if, if like free, if the driveway is elevated, you have to grade off the side. Thirty feet, barely do it.
Right, yeah, and you gotta, at a three to one slope, it eats it up pretty quick.
Right, and if you gotta place stormwater management facilities in that right of way and the control, you, you will have to, you need the space.
Well, that, that way on that house is only twenty-five feet.
So do you think we ought to make it fifteen be done?
Well, make it uniform.
We run into all kinds of stuff right now.
If it's thirty in one and, and you're recommending fifty.
Yeah.
Well, I would like to see that because we have twelve-foot rightaways that are deeded. And that's nowhere near enough. It's an agriculture right away to take a tractor back.
Whole farm lanes.
Yep.
Or logging roofs.
But that's in the ordinance and that's what the guys got.
Well, again, getting back to the issue about the section, about the at, draw, access drives, if there's other things here where there's con, where there's conflicts, we can, we could prepare the other, the zoning part for, for you, considering where the amendments that would be needed to make the two, make them match. That, that's not, that's not difficult for us to, to put together. That's what you, what you ultimately decide. You're gonna be happy to do that.
Be like, I don't want to the zoning ones.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a second, a second amendment. A, a, it'd be a full, throwing a full new Saldo and then a ordinance, zoning ordinance amendment at the, at the same time. And it's not, all it's doing is making sure that the two ordinances aren't creating conflicts.
I have fifty, so fifty feet to I don't really need all the fifty feet.
I don't, I think, I think it's necessary really. Especially if it's a, if it's a driveway to an act, access of a house or business or whatever.
Right.
Now, you know, an old farming or something, or even if it is recognized as a right of way. That's a little bit different. But if it's got to be something that's surveyed, I would say.
Yeah, we're basically told by the new construction.
Right, I'd get fifty feet, I think is, would be adequate.
Yeah. If it, if it gets long enough, they're, they're into, I think he asked for it now.
For what?
If it's long enough, they're into, into a storm, full stormwater, yes.
Yeah. Threshold is pretty quick.
It, you know, I, the other part of my job, he works in, with half of the dead township down there. They have, they have, they've gone back and forth multiple times over the past decade, couple of decades with dealing with this sort of, sort of thing with the old blocks and the trails they have down there. And allowing them, not allowing them, at one point they had, you know, maintenance treatments with everybody. Nothing could be added or expanded unless everybody agreed. It was a, it was just a, it's a, it's a free for all and, and it's, and it's asking that they're, they've been trying to grapple with for fifty years. So that takes about, about, about halfway on this section. So it took up you five seconds away. If you read, and read through these things and you have, have comments or questions. You know, get them to, get us to Rob or something, you can get them to, to me or whatnot. The, the plan, the plan is to get through this section and six. And then we'll go back and edit four, five and six and, and put that all together. The next section after this that's left is seven, which is mobile home parks. Most of the mobile home parks in Salz around the county.
Their agenda is fairly white. See that too, so goodness coming up.
Yeah, May, May's reorganization, so.
Oh, yeah, that.
If you want, you want to boot me or Tom to rocks you off, like it's your chance to vote.
You're the glue that keeps us together. Hey, we gotta have some smart people on here.
Oh, and there's, there's, I think there's a couple, I just got copies of.
Yeah, one that should run and.
Yeah, I had mine there for Ron and Tom.
There, and here's three copies of it.
So, that's, that's it for, okay. Uh, the last item is public comments.
Yeah, I had my hand raised when you were doing the Birmingham thing, but you didn't see me, none of you did. But I wanted to note that the agenda was not posted yesterday. It, it came about between nine eleven and nine thirty-eight this morning. And I've got screenshots all morning long. So do you know why that happened or how? Because this has happened to the BOS meeting also.
You know, I don't post it, agendas, that's gusking to Gus audience.
Well, that was my fault. I usually send it out to him on Thursday and I didn't get it done. And so when I realized when I was going over everything Saturday, I sent it to him on Saturday for, to do it Monday morning. And he did it Monday morning. So I apologize for that, but it was posted on the door here at the building.
But it's supposed to be on the website also.
I know.
And I know that the Adams County IT department handles it for us, but like I said, this, it's a concern because it's considered a Sunshine Act violation.
Well, you can shoot me on Monday morning. I apologize for that, Marie.
No, it's, it's just that it's, like I said, I was up early, so I was like, why isn't this? And then I thought perhaps it was canceled.
Okay, he explained it. Accept his apology and go on.
It's my fault.
I do want to let you know that I record these meetings. They're on YouTube under Huntington Township Watch for the residents that can't be here. So they see how I have been treated and it's not a good look for the township. I mean, when I asked you to raise your, well, I, well, people see it. When I asked you to raise your voice, I'm a senior citizen.
Well, I am too. I have trouble, I have trouble with.
No, and this is why. I said, I'm going to BOS and I'm going to, I'm going to request that microphones be put in. Because when these videos have to be edited, it's constantly has to be raised for the entire, now I've recorded almost two hours. And you have to go through editing and raising everybody's voices. So, and I could understand, but when you're talking in a hall like this, and I mean, you speak among yourselves too sometimes. Like when that gentleman brought this drawing in. It's not posted for the people and I guess you're not used to residents attending these meetings. Do you not get anyone to attend?
Not very many.
Excuse me?
Not very many.
Oh, okay. I mean, it would just be nice, like, I don't even know who this gentleman is. He was not introduced when all the people were here. All his name was Andy. And then when he was sitting in the back, he was asking questions of this gentleman and nobody heard him. Because he was sitting behind the election desks. So it's just something to think about. It's, it, like I said, I do this solely because residents cannot come to these meetings. It's very busy for them. They're working two jobs sometimes. And the neighbors, it is getting through to, like, like I said, all my neighbors watch it because they can't be here. So I appreciate it, but and I know you guys spend your time, but it's just that you're appointed by elected officials. And to be treated the way I've been in the past. And like I said, this is my first meeting here. So thank you.
All right. Any other public comments?
There's a possibility I will be here next month.
Next month.
I'm having surgery and time will be taken in minutes whether I make it or not. Cause I probably will not be able to last for two hours.
Okay. All right. The next meeting is Monday, that's it's the twenty, May twentieth, yeah. It's not the normal. And here are any other comments or discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make that, that's. One of the named motions are second then?
I'll second.
Second. General, one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote for them.